Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Glad to see all of you here tonight. We'll start off this afternoon or this evening with the swearing in of our new councilman, Councilman Smith as Judge Overtree that she will come forward.
If you want to come forward, please. Sure. Ms. Smith, would you like to, Councilman Smith?
All right.
Would you like to place your hand on the Bible, your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand? And if you repeat after me, do you, if you'll state your name, please, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully perform the duties of council member for the city of Greensboro, that you will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. So help you God.
I do, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Ms. Smith, if you have not heard your tight name. I wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the scene, Councilman Smith.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Postel, I'll get you the oath after we record a copy in the probate court office.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. If you all would just bear with us for a moment because certain state laws, we can't start until 6:00. So if you give just a few more moments, we'll start at the hour of 6:00. The 6:00 hour is upon us. Want to welcome all of you here on tonight to our second meeting of the month of November. We want to say that we thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to show concern for the city of Greensboro. As always, we'll open up with prayer on tonight. If it's a part of our ceremony that you wish not to participate in, we'll give you a moment to excuse yourself. If not, then we'll go ahead and open it up with prayer. Most gracious heaven and father, we love you, we magnify you, we thank you, God, for being who you are. God, our one and only true living God, we ask on tonight, God, that your Holy Spirit will rain down on us. And God, fill us up, Father God, that we'll be able, God, to hear from you, God, in order to make the decision, God, that you have ordained for us to make on tonight, God, that we may be able, God, to carry out your business, God, the way you want it to be carried out in the city of Greensboro. And we just thank you now in your son, Jesus' name, we do pray. Amen and thank God.
Amen.
City manager, let the minutes reflect that everyone is present on tonight except our city clerk. Brings us down to number four on our agenda, which is the approval of October 18, 2022, special call meeting minutes. Counsel, you have a copy of those minutes. I give you time to read over if you have not done so. And once you're ready to vote on those, if you would just raise your right hand, signify that you're ready. I entertain a motion and a second to approve or to accept the minutes for October 18, 2022.
Motion.
It's been a motion and second. It's been motion and second to approve.
Prove.
To approve. Motion and second to approve all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number five, approval of special call meeting minutes that was held on October 28, 2022. Counsel, I give you that same amount of time to look over those minutes if you have not done so. And once you're ready, signify it's on that you're ready by raising your right hand. All right. Entertainer motion now second to approve the call meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Number six on the agenda, the approval of our October 28, 2022 executive session minutes. Give you time to read over those. Once you've read over those, counsel, ask that you will pass them to your left, signify that you're ready. Be careful because you have an October 28 and a November 7 executive session. Everybody pass. Entertain a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes.
Motion to approve.
I like that. Almost that, that's the second as well.
Who was the second?
He was the first. Yeah.
Who was first?
Mr. Neal was first. No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Approval of November 7, 2022 regular session minutes. Time to look over those. Once you've looked over those minutes, signify by raising your right hand, saying that you're ready. Entertain a motion and a second to approve November 7 regular session minutes.
Second.
The second, no further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Brings us down to number eight, the approval of our November 7, 2022 executive session minutes. Seems like everybody has already passed theirs to the left. Entertain a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes of November 7, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Bring us down to number nine, supervisory report from Ms. Nicole Chilwell, Festival Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
That was a lot of minutes. Thank you for having me tonight. I've given you each a packet to look over with sort of the notes, the summary of what I'm going to talk about tonight real quickly. And then also, there is a year-end report. So I'd like to just dive into the financial report for the year end. I think it's on the second page, second handout. So we, and this is a year-to-year comparison, October 2021 to September 2022 as compared to October 2020 to September 2021. So if you wanted to look side by side, we did a lot more business this year than we did the last year. We had a good year with our concessions. Our contributions and support were a little lower than the previous year, and that's because we did a pandemic plea in 2020 to help during that difficult time that we all Also, the emergency fund, the city helped us with that in 2020, so we didn't have any from the city for this year. Government contributions, those are basically to reimburse Festival Hall for power and water usage. And you can see there was an increase, but usually when we have more activity in the hall, we'll have more power usage. So there's nothing really unusual about that increase. Our grants, we did a lot better this year than last year with our grants. We did receive a grant in the amount of $14,500 to restore our floors. As you can see, we were able to do that in August, with your help as well. Rental income was a lot better than the previous year as well. Our ticket sales, we ended up having about $13,000 in ticket sales, which is good. The other additional income that we received was from the shuttered venues operating grant. We received a total of $31,000 and some change, but we used part of it for the previous year and then the rest of it this year. And we had to spend it all, or we would lose it. So that was, you can see the side-by-side total income for this year as compared to last year. And if you look down at our expenses, as I said earlier, when we have more activity in the hall, we have more expenses. That's just how it works. Our business, our building maintenance included that $14,500 for the flooring project. Trying to think if there's anything else on here that you might... So, and we spent, we spent all of that SFOG expense that we used for just a variety of things. We did get a new website, which was a cost, a portion of that. And if, I hope you've had a chance to look at our new website, but if you haven't, you should check it out tonight because it's great. And we're really excited about that. We used this SFOG money for a lot of different things. We bought some microphones. We did a little repair inside the building. We used it for just regular expenses that we incur. So that's, that's all I really have on that, if y'all have any questions.
Ms. Nicole, do you still see a need for a assistant or part-time?
I would, yes. And I say that because there are times when I'm here for a very extended period of time. And like Saturday, I was here for 15 hours, which is a long time because we have events that last. When we have a wedding, for instance, we'll have, the decorators come in at 9:00 and then, and then the, then all day, we're here, they're here decorating, they're here getting ready for the party, and then the party happens, and then we have the cleanup. So there are days when I could definitely use somebody to come and help take some of that burden. Also, we can potentially have more events if we have another, a part-time person because, you know, it's, it's hard to work that many hours, day in, day in and day out. So having somebody to kind of split that would be very helpful. So yes, it would be nice.
So you're saying we're missing out on events because we don't, you don't have the...
I don't think we're necessarily missing out on events, but I think that we could probably, it would just be easier to, I mean, I haven't said no to any events, but I'm also getting, it'd be nice to have somebody to help me with those long days.
Any more question, Councilman Moore?
Yes. It's been a little while. That's one thing that's on my, on my list to, to talk with my board about. We were going to wait till the beginning of the year to revisit. But yes, we need to, we need to do a little bit of changing some of the rates and changing the city use dates, and there's a lot that can be, can be worked on. So yes.
Get lower, lower.
Well... Yeah, and I, and I get that. We have not, we have not raised our rates in about six years either. So we do do some half-day rates for people. We can work on that. We can look at our structure and try to find ways that we can allow people that maybe don't have the funds to work on it. So that's a good, that's a good observation. So we'll, maybe we can talk about it and try to figure out a good compromise. Because we also do need to keep the lights on in the hall, and we need to, there's lots of costs that come in with renting the facility for the day use, electricity, water, cleaning. Cleaning's very expensive. So, you know, we really don't, even with some of the rental rates, we don't make very much money as it is. So we just really have to figure out a balance. But I definitely want everybody in Greensboro to be able to utilize Festival Hall. You're welcome. So I'll move down to hall activity.
Before we go to that, can I ask a question, Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Picking back on what Councilwoman Moore just said, the part-time person that Mayor just asked about, would that person be part-time, would they have a schedule, or would you just ask needed?
Well, I mean, I could, it could be either way. I mean, I could use somebody as needed, but probably when you, probably need to have some kind of like regular schedule to keep somebody. Couldn't just, you know, I do have a few people that I can call on when I need to, and I haven't had to do it that often, but, you know, to come in. But those are just folks that, and they're not always available, so.
And really, I ask you that. A part-time person, I think you'll have a problem getting somebody to just come as needed. If you could give them, you know, 12, 20 hours a week, at least they have a schedule to make it appealing, but just as needed, I don't...
No, I agree.
See you for getting a great...
I agree with you.
...deal of help there. And picking back on what Councilwoman Moore, I hope you do look at, our fees are real close. A lot of, a lot of people can afford it, a lot of people can't afford it. They want to use the hall, but they just can't afford the hall.
Yes, sir. I understand.
So if we could really look at, look at our fee, tweak it one way or the other, but it need to be, I think, a little bit more appealing to the whole community.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we had eight city council meetings since July 6. We had private events, two private events, three weddings, birthday party, baby shower, class reunion. We had a funeral. We had two Opus performances, Six Wire and Broadway Sings, late country players, Abopalooza fundraiser, and just last week, three performances of a nine-to-five. Lake Okony Academy did a one-act play in here. We had our Festival Hall Jazz Series, Billy Strayhorn, and we had the Gospel Explosion, which our mayor was the emcee, as you remember. And we had the Rock and Roll Cruisin', which, we don't really do anything for that other than open up the building for bathrooms. And it is a great way for us to be visible to the community. And some, I have heard so many people say, I've never seen, I've never been here before, so this is a great building. So that's one way, that's a great thing for us. And then other city meetings. Hall improvements. I just mentioned our flooring project, which was completed using funds from the Watson-Brown grant that we received. And the structural improvements underneath the building were completed. I just want to make sure everyone knows that the bidding and procurement processes for both of those projects were above board. We ended up receiving bids from two different contractors for the underneath construction, and we chose the bid that was the lowest. And same with the flooring project. We also, in addition to regular maintenance, which is HVAC, fire, and security systems, the gutters on the outside of the building were cleaned and repaired. Upcoming usage through December 31st. So the next two weeks are busy. This Saturday, we have a concert here with Opus. A young woman named Morgan James will be here. Monday, we are going to have court in here for one day. They have a big calendar call, and they have a lot of people, so we're just allowing them to use the hall for Monday for court. And then the 30th, we have our piano, piano for the hall, graduation recital, and fundraiser. And so we are trying to, for the first time, this, we have been in business since 2010, and we do not have a concert piano. And we are at Performing Arts and Events Center. We should have one. We should also, we could also use it for piano recitals. People can use it in many different ways. So we're, we're trying to raise funds for that. And we're having a concert with a young man who is planning on attending a conservatory in 2023 to pursue his dream of becoming a concert pianist. So we're, we're kicking off our fundraiser on Wednesday, November 30th, at 7:00 PM. And we have the Lighting of the Tree, and we have the Opus Youth Concert on Sunday, the 3rd, or 4th, I'm sorry. 2023, we're extending our Jazz Legacy Series. And we, I gave you one of these. This outlines our four concerts we're going to have. We're really excited about this. We've had a lot of good feedback from it. It's an affordable way for people to come and enjoy some really good music. And we're trying to get our, our community more, a little more educated in the art of jazz. So we're excited about that. Our board is very active and engaged, and we are brainstorming strategies to increase fundraising and grant retention. We are also working on a strategic plan, and we should have that done early 2023. So I may, if y'all are interested, I'd love to share that with you when we have it. So yeah, in December, I start my fifth year here, which is very exciting. And I'm, I'm just, I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to be the director here at this great facility. And I just look forward to trying to bring, bring Festival Hall even, even further next year and the years after that. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think I went through Councilmore, Councilville. Councilwoman Rivers, do you have any questions?
I have one more. Mayor, how many board members do you have?
We have nine. We, actually, we have eight. We're still, we have one that we need to fill.
One vacancy?
Hmm?
You have one vacancy?
One vacancy.
Thank you. That's it, Ms. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
No, sir, Ms. Smith.
Councilwoman Neal?
No.
I would like to add at the end that the Festival Hall is, is a joint venture between three parties. It's not just the city by itself, so I don't want the community to think that the city of Greensboro generates the revenue that comes from the Festival Hall. Right now, we're, we're going to look at the contract that, that was established before we got here, before this administration took office. And we want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed to make sure that it's the best fit for the city of Greensboro, because as of right now, the city isn't generating the funds from it, but we're putting out a whole lot forward. So we want to make sure that when we do look at those rates, then it compensates for Ms. Nicole and whatever help that she may need. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Number 10 on our agenda, Ms. Kendrick Ward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to present the road closure for the Lighting of the Tree, which is going to be held on Friday, December 2nd. I am asking for closure of North Main Street, I'm starting at 2:30, from Court Street to Green Street, and then Green Street from the Bank South driveway to Mr. Sees. And that is for us to load in. And then at 3:30, I'm asking for road closure from Broad Street to Court Street to finish it off, and Court Street to East Street, so.
Thank you so much. Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Ward. I entertain a motion to approve the road, the street closure.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Have a great one. Number 11 is the second reading of the ordinance to amend chapter 121-2, 121-125, and 121-206. City Attorney, do you care to elaborate on number 11?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As y'all know from the last meeting, we discussed these changes to our ordinances, which will better define the various stores that can be used in certain areas of your zoning. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor, that anybody had since the last meeting, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Other than that, this is just the second reading and final passage.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, I apologize, I entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Number 12, approval of Meadowcrest Road waterline extension. City manager, would you care to talk about these?
Yes, sir. If everyone remembers, we discussed the new school that the school board is wanting to build on Meadowcrest. The school board pledged 1.2 million toward water and sewer extension. After that was agreed to, we conducted the engineering and took the project to bid. If you can look at the bid tabulation sheet, we had two bid, two people bid on the project. There was Forts's and Universal Underground. The bid that you see, the low bid at 966-108, that bid reflects 8,120 feet of PVC waterline, 12-inch PVC waterline. There's also an alternative, there's two alternatives at the bottom. Alternative number one is a 12-inch ductile iron, which is a much sturdier and longer elastic pipe. We can actually get that cheaper, so, cheaper than we can the PVC. So in effect, if you look at the very bottom number, 896-1896... So in effect, if you look at the very bottom number, 896-18960, that's what I'm recommending that we choose for the project. And that will be ductile iron, 12-inch.
Council, do you understand what City Manager just explained to you?
Yeah, I understand it, but, of course, to City Manager, how many feet is that going to be?
It's going to be 8,320 feet.
You have it in here?
It's number 17.
If you look at the original bid, number four and five, that's your total linear feet. We had 200 feet of ductile iron mandated in the original bid. But now that we can make the whole thing 100% ductile iron, then it comes out to the whole 8,320 feet. That has, right now, it looks like we have inventory.
Councilwoman Rivers, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Neal?
No, sir.
Any further discussion from anyone else? No further discussion? All those in, I entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Let the minutes reflect. Brings us down to number 13, budget amendment number one, for fiscal year 2023, for the addition of, addition a finance director position. City Manager?
We had originally budgeted 20,000 for finance director, but I think after we looked and took some closer look at it, we're going to need, we're going to need 100, we're going to need a $100,000 budget amendment for salaries.
Correction, City Manager, let's push it to 120, just make sure we can cover everything in case, in case there's a mishap of some sort. We don't want to have to come back and ask for anything else. Yes, sir, you can. Yes, sir. Just for the finance director as a whole, yes, sir. Any further discussion? No further discussion? No further discussion? Yes, sir.
We're taking them from last year's budget surplus. From last year's budget surplus.
All right. Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment for addition finance director. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number 14, unfinished business. I have some unfinished business. On the last meeting, City Manager, young lady Ms. Champion asked us to make sure we cleared off around a 5 Hydrant off of, I don't remember the street. Councilwoman, do you remember? Oak Horn Avenue, have we done that yet? And if we haven't done it, I just want to make sure, let's just make sure we get it done.
Okay.
You know, unfinished business, Councilwoman Moore? City Manager, any unfinished business?
No, sir.
City Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I may, just to let the council know that the lost mediation, the one cent sales tax mediation, has been scheduled for Thursday, November 30th. And we'll get with you on time, but I'm pretty sure it'll be 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning. My anticipation is, is that the mayor may get with the manager and call a meeting at some point for that day in case there's an agreement reached, so y'all could approve it. But we'll get with you later on that. Just put that on the calendar, Thursday, November 30th.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Moore? Any unfinished business? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Miller, I'm looking at you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Neal?
No.
All right, brings us down to number 15, new business. I don't have any new business. Councilwoman Moore, do you have any? All right, City Manager, do you have any new business?
No, sir.
City Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think y'all know that Kale had a death in her family, and she was going to be here tonight to explain a request that she had for a change in ordinance. And I'm going to pass it out real quick, Mr. Mayor, and explain to you. It's very simple, and it'd just be a first reading anyway. Like I said, Mr. Mayor, this is only the first reading tonight, so it requires no action on your part other than answering questions. And I'm sure that Kale will be here at the next meeting when you would have the second reading. But basically, what they've run into is that under our ordinances regarding signs, you can see there changeable copy signs. In other words, a sign that you can actually change the letters on, or change the electronic sign that you could change what it says on. You already allow those in your, with theaters, entertainment facilities, nonprofit organizations. Churches now have those signs as well, and they have made similar requests to be allowed to use changeable copy signs. And all this does is add churches into that list of people who could have these changeable, so-called changeable signs. That's the only change it makes, Mr. Mayor. And just like I said, this is a request from Kale, from her working within the historic commercial district.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Miller?
Attorney, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I'm reading the last article. Should we change that name, the Honorable Glenn Wright to Honorable Corey Ween?
I think that's an old copy that got stuck in there. We absolutely should change it. I don't think it would work if we didn't.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Councilwoman Rivers? Councilwoman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Neal?
No.
All right, brings us down to number 16, public comments. Ask that you hold your comments to a two-minute minimum. Public comments. Good evening.
Well, I'd like to first say that it's good to be here and just see you guys coming together and, you know, working on a common goal, and that's to improve the city. In regards to the Festival Hall, just coming from a hospitality perspective, I was just curious if the city has access to, like, view the invoices, to compare to the expenses or the payments and stuff like that? And the other thing, do you guys, I'm not sure, this is probably something this young lady can answer, in regards to P and L reviews, profit and loss sheets? Is that something that the city will have access to? I know she said that it's like a joint venture, but just curious if the city has access to review P and Ls? If so, how do you identify the flow, once the revenue has been taken in, identify what you've got going out, what's left at the conclusion of it all? And the other thing is, you may already do this, but just curious in regards to if there are like peak and off-peak seasons? And if you have, you are able to identify your peak and off-peak seasons? Is there something that, there's some type of idea to generate business in off-peak season? So let's say, I know for us, at the hotel, our off-peak seasons are like right now. So we take the initiative to, you know, to generate business so that we're just not dead in the off-peak season. Know our rates are not what they would be in the peak seasons. However, we do offer concessions that will drive and make the business, I guess I would say, entertaining to potential guests. So is that something that, you know, is done as far as the Festival Hall is concerned? So I know that Councilwoman Moore raised a concern for some of the constituents about the cost of the rental of the building. Understood. We're looking at inflation now, so I know that the cost of power is up, cost of water, we're all feeling that. However, let's say if your off-peak season is December, if the cost, let's say that the cost of rental for the Festival Hall is $1,500. Is there a concession to be made to advertise business to say, hey, if you book by this day, we may be able to rent you the Festival Hall for $1,000? And, you know, you may not be able to get it for 10 hours, or, not 10 hours, maybe say seven or eight hours, but you may be able to get it for four or five hours for $1,000. And then just to maximize the potential to rent this building so that it pays for itself, and then be able to monitor, so if you wasn't doing it the year before, monitor what your flow-through is when you're comparing your P and L to, okay, this is what we did last year, but this is what we did this year, and then monitor your flow-through to see, okay, we were able to maximize, you know, weekly, you know, we rented the building through the week, or we rented it on a Sunday, or it was off-peak season, so we didn't charge the normal price for it, but we charged this. I'm thinking, I see it every day, and it does intrigue business. You may already be doing that, but just something I was curious about. So, you know, just the recommendations to try and encourage, like, what are the incentives? What are concessions that are being offered to try and pull the business in? This is a great facility, but it really serves no purpose if it's not paying for it. At some point, it needs to show some sign of a profit to be able to pay for itself, and then, again, just maximize this square footage in this space so that you're able to say, okay, I know that the cost of business, the cost of running the business, or the overhead is this right now, but we've tried to capture the revenue, the potential revenue, to offset that by saying, okay, I'm not going to charge this, but in this off-peak season, you know, we may be able to generate it by doing this. So just some thoughts in regards to the whole Festival Hall thing.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, and I actually, I greatly appreciate the previous speaker's comments because I'm a real dollar and cents, a money type of person, an investor. And congratulations to you, Mr. Smith, I voted for you.
Thank you.
Of course, I bet that was your mom. But anyway, I'm here again to speak to you about the purchase, the BB&amp;T Building. She certainly grabbed my attention because she's talking about money, and we're sitting here talking about budgets. And what I heard in this meeting was that you all just voted to spend $900,000, just like that. Just like that, in a matter of, what, 10 seconds or so? We're talking about a water line. No one asked, how long is this water line going to last? What's, why get this one instead of the other one? We just went for the cheaper one. And, you know, I guess maybe that's how you do business, but when we do business like that, we find ourselves losing money. So I need to go back and revisit the BB&amp;T Building. When I first started talking about it, I was really bothered that the city had spent $385,000 on a building back in December of 2018 that they have allowed to just sit there. But what I didn't know at the time, but I knew there was something more, was that the city had actually refinanced that building in January of 2019 for 1.4 million dollars. 1.4 million dollars. I don't know who they ran this by, because to me, if you're going to have an expenditure of that magnitude, 1.4 million dollars, you put it out for a special bond referendum, or you put it out for a special vote to the public. Because I think the public needs to know, if you're spending 1.4 million dollars and your budget is only $5 million, that's what your budget is this year or next year, I believe. So maybe four years ago, your budget wasn't even 5 million. So if you were going to spend 25,000, 25% of your budget, I think the public deserved to know that. I don't know who approved that, and no one wants to tell me. I don't understand that. Who took that special vote? When was that vote taken? Where did they take that vote? For 1.4 million dollars. So right now, we have spent 200, or $306,000 so far on payments that we have to pay every quarter for that building, for that loan. And you know what? No one's sitting in that building yet, and the building continues to deteriorate. So that right there, 1.4 million dollars, you're talking about getting a part-time employee for your Festival Hall? And I also heard, and not to get on you, Nicole, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, and I don't mean to be rude and call you by your first name. But when I hear that you spent all the money that you received for a grant because you had to spend it, but then you say in the next breath, well, I need a part-time employee, I'm thinking to myself, could that money have not been saved for that part-time employee? Why did you spend all the money if you had to spend it? Because when you spend really quickly, maybe you don't think about what you're spending it on. Okay, now I want to get to my second point. I've questioned the employment of Kendrick Ward and Kale Hammons. They're two people who are responsible for downtown development, bringing business to our downtown. I've lived here for four years. So far, I've really not seen any new business come downtown. I've seen some businesses come downtown, businesses leave, not anyone stay. The brewery, fantastic place. I go there every weekend. It's two blocks behind my house. We can't rest on the laurels of the brewery. I want to get business down here, but they need to be friendly in recruiting business and answering questions. If I call and I have a question, I would like for someone to return my phone call. Now, I understand that they're part-time employees, and they each make $59,000 a year. Now, and I know that because it was in the paper and it hasn't been disputed. So both of them make $120,000 combined, and you know, since I've been coming to meetings, I've only seen one of these people here one time, and that's tonight. Now, I see Melanie Miller, who was running for a position, the commissioner, she comes every meeting. She doesn't have to. She's not employed by the city. She shows up because she has a vested interest. I see the city manager here every meeting. He's a salaried employee. They're salaried employees. Why aren't they here? You guys don't get the pay that they get. Our police officers don't get the pay that they get. They actually got a $3,000 bonus last year, each one of them. And one of them worked from home the entire time. She worked from home. And that was Ms. Hammons. She, no, you said that to me, Ms. City Manager, you said that to me in a meeting that I had with you. She worked from home. She made $59,000 last year and a $3,000 bonus. She made $59,000 last year and a $3,000 bonus. Our police officers who work full-time made a $1,000 bonus. 1,000. And that was paid in increments to them over an eight-month period. Now, I want to know where's the fairness in that? And also, if these two young ladies can have a part-time salaried position, is that offered to all the other salaried employees in our city? Because it should be. If it's not, you're violating the labor law. Homecoming Parade was phenomenal. I don't know who was responsible for it, but I loved it. Okay, I know I need to wrap up. I would love to see a Christmas parade. Can those two people not organize one? We had all these parents and children, high school kids, organize a Christmas parade. That was fantastic. But yet, we don't have a Christmas parade downtown Greensboro. Thank you for your time. Again, congratulations. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Any more public comments? Any more public comments?
I was just wanting to kind of make a statement as it relates to the use of the city's webpage. I've yet to see the purpose of it, because the only thing that's on it is weekly agendas that you can discurrent. I don't see any minutes, the last minutes that were posted was from September of this year. And the page should actually be getting used for what the purpose of it was generated for, is to inform the citizens of the county and the city of what's going on. Everybody can't attend the meetings. Some people don't have access to the internet. The page should actually have all the, everything we discuss in these meetings, public comments, council decisions, anything that's available for the public to know about should be on that webpage. You shouldn't have to be at a meeting or pull it up on Facebook, YouTube, or whatever to know what was discussed at the meetings. I've been to city council meetings at other counties that were a lot more organized, a lot more structured than this one, but that information was also available on their webpage. So anybody could have pulled it up on a cell phone, a tablet, a laptop, desktop. You didn't have to be at the meeting, and you didn't have to use YouTube to see what went on at the meetings. So can we get someone to be dedicated, or I guess, assigned to keep the webpage current and inform the citizens of what the tax dollars are being used for, the concerns that are public concerns, and the things that are being discussed at the meetings? The page needs to be current and utilized. That's a tax dollar expenditure that we don't need to keep putting money into if it's not going to be used.
City Manager, just for clarity for our community, can you go back to the budget for the Meadowcrest project and let the citizens know that we did not vote to pay that amount of money? Who will be paying that amount of money out?
That money's going to be paid by Green County School Board.
Thank you so much. Brings us down to number 17, the adjournment of the meeting. I entertain a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Smith, since it's your first night, we're going to give you the duty to pray us out on tonight.
No problem. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for this evening, Lord God. I ask you to strengthen the heart and the mind of the ones that ran and sent a deceit, Lord. Make the decision for the city, for the employees, and best serve this community, Lord. Lord bless their hearts. Lord bless their mind. Let us get together and work together for the benefit of this city, Lord, for your city, Lord, Father. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all so much for your time on tonight.